Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming out. My name is Em Smith. I'm a member of Workers Strike Back. We are here with Workers Strike Back, community activists, working people, and former Seattle Councilmember Shama Sawant to announce Shama's working-class anti-war campaign for U.S. Congress against war mongering, pro-corporate Democratic Congressman Adam Smith in Washington's 9th Congressional District. I want to introduce our first speaker. In 2014, we elected Shama Sawant to the Seattle City Council. Shama served for 10 years as the only socialist on the council, the first socialist elected in Seattle in nearly 100 years. She used her office to win historic victories, including the $15-an-hour minimum wage, the first in any major city, the Amazon tax for affordable housing, and a long list of renters' rights, including the $10-a-month cap on late rent fees, the ban on winter evictions, and six months' notice of rent increases. Shama went to war for working people. She built movements of thousands of people to take on big business, the corporate landlords, and the Democrats on City Council. And she won victory after victory. As the magazine Mother Jones noted, "Who thought only one lonely Trotskyist could sew up end in so little time the American consensus on a fair wage?" The New York Times wrote in 2013, "Nobody reckoned with Shama Sawant." Shama is the co-founder of Workers Strike Back and an elected member of its National Coordinating Committee. It's my honor to introduce Shama Sawant.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Most of the time, working people have no political representation under capitalism. Both the Democrats and Republicans serve the interests of the billionaires, and both are war mongering parties down to their bones. My decade as a socialist on the Seattle City Council was fundamentally different. My fellow socialists and I completely flipped the script on how to use elected office. We rejected any idea that my job was to help administer the capitalist state through behind-the-scenes negotiations with Democrats and the Chamber of Commerce. Instead, my socialist City Council office went to war for working people to defeat the strenuous opposition from both big business and the Democratic Party, and again and again, we won. When I first ran for the Seattle City Council in 2013, I campaigned on a $15-an-hour minimum wage. It was dismissed as utopian at the time. I also ran on taxing the rich and on rent control. Unlike the Squad and other progressives, I kept my promises. Less than six months after my election, we won the nation's first major city $15-an-hour minimum wage, a wage that is now the highest in the country at $20.76 an hour because we also won inflation increases. It was after our victory here that the fight for $15 spread around the country. In 2020, we won the Amazon tax, which raises hundreds of millions of dollars annually from the city's wealthiest businesses to fund affordable housing. So yes, it is possible to defeat Amazon even on their home turf. We won a slew of renters' rights victories, including limits on previously exorbitant move-in fees, a $10 cap on late rent fees, a requirement of six months' notice for rent increases, economic eviction assistance forcing landlords to pay three months' rent to tenants forced to leave due to rent increases of 10% or more, a ban on evictions in winter months, and a ban on school year evictions of children and public school workers. These victories sent corporate landlords into an uproar. One of the city's real estate lobbyists, brother of recent Mayor Jenny Durkan, complained that every dollar spent on the Seattle City Council was being wasted because of Sawant's army. Sometimes your enemies give the best compliments. We won because we didn't put faith in the utterly failed strategy of trying to reform the Democratic or Republican Party or winning over these politicians through moral persuasion. The problem is that, with rare exceptions, they have no morals. Even if a given politician started out with good intentions, the leadership of their party ensures they don't last long. Either the morals go, or the politician does. After I left City Council undefeated in four elections to launch Workers Strike Back, Seattle Democrats have dedicated themselves to trying to undermine or overturn our working-class victories in Seattle. Workers Strike Back has been able to defeat both their efforts so far. Last year, when they attacked our historic minimum wage victory, and just last week, when we forced them to back off on their attempt to attack renters' rights by first undermining the city's ethics laws. This showed once again that when we fight, we win. When we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
Our fighting strategy is urgently needed nationally, including in the U.S. Congress. Aggressive Democrats like AOC and Bernie Sanders have long since capitulated to the corporate and war mongering agenda of their party. Working people need elected representatives willing to use their positions to build mass movements in order to end the genocide and all U.S. military funding to the Israeli state, defeat the attacks on public funds for our basic needs, and win offensive demands like free healthcare for all by taxing the rich or Medicare for All and a $25-an-hour minimum wage. This is why I launched Workers Strike Back. This is also why I am running for Congress against Democrat Adam Smith. Just as I used my City Council election campaigns to build momentum for the $15 minimum wage and the Amazon tax, I will use my congressional election campaign to help build the anti-war movement and to launch a historic fight for Medicare for All. And just as I did in my decade as a representative of working people in Seattle, if I'm elected to Congress, I will accept only the average worker's wage and donate the rest of my six-figure salary to workers and social justice movements. Contrary to the shocking and systematic under-reporting in mainstream media, estimates from The Lancet indicate the Gaza debt toll was likely over 335,000 by September last year. It has likely since surpassed 400,000. At least 100 Gazan children are being injured or killed daily since Israel resumed its genocidal offensive in March. Gaza has been reduced to rubble. Neither the Democratic nor the Republican Party has a shred of moral credibility after having backed the Israeli state to the hill. Both are fully responsible for what is, in reality, a new Holocaust. It would not have been possible without the billions of dollars they approved in funding from the U.S. state. But we should not be surprised. Both Democrats and Republicans have been purveyors of endless brutal wars throughout their history. The Democrats and Republicans in the U.S. Congress spent more than $14 trillion on war since 9/11. A third to one-half of this money is pocketed by military contractors who, in turn, fund the campaign of their favorite Democrats and Republicans. One such weapons industry treasure is my opponent in Washington's 9th Congressional District, Democrat Adam Smith, who has held this office since 1997 and who has blood all over his hands. Just days ago, on May 24, Israeli forces bombarded the Gaza home of Dr. Hamdi Al-Najr and his wife, Dr. Alaa Al-Najr, both physicians at Nasser Medical Complex. At that time, pediatrician Dr. Alaa Al-Najr was on duty at the hospital delivering care to injured Palestinian babies and children. And at that time, nine of the couple's 10 children were killed, and their sole surviving child was seriously injured. Dr. Hamdi Al-Najr was also gravely injured and died on Saturday. The blood of the Al-Najr family, along with the other 400,000 Palestinians, is on Adam Smith's hands. No politician who has supported this genocide deserves one more working-class vote. Every single one of them deserves to be thrown out of office, starting with Adam Smith. Smith has never met a war that he didn't like. He has fully backed the genocide in Gaza. He has demonized anti-genocide activists as extremists and left-wing fascists, called for them to be arrested, and likened their actions to the far-right attack on the U.S. Capitol. He holds the shameful distinction of being one of only five sitting Democratic Congress members who voted for the Iraq War in 2002. He supported the wars in Kosovo, Afghanistan, Iraq, Libya, Syria, Yemen, and the current bloody inter-imperialist proxy war in Ukraine. For nearly three decades, Smith has been bankrolled by weapons industry profiteers such as Lockheed Martin, Boeing, General Dynamics, Raytheon, Northrop Grumman, Palantir, General Atomics, and Kimeta. In 2016, he was one of only 16 Democrats who voted against an amendment to block the transfer of cluster bombs, which are horrific weapons used for mass indiscriminate killing, to Saudi Arabia for use against the people of Yemen, something for which he has been handsomely rewarded by Textron, the leading manufacturer of cluster bombs. In 2021, as Chair of the House Armed Services Committee, Smith proudly championed a grotesque $768 billion budget for the Pentagon, making it the largest military budget in U.S. history at the time, and $25 billion over even what President Biden was calling for. Far from being a foot soldier, Smith is a general among the war hawks. He has helped lead the financing of the ongoing genocide in Gaza as one of the most influential members still of the House Armed Services Committee. Smith is a darling of AIPAC and the Zionist lobby, the weapons industry, and the billionaire class. AIPAC was his biggest funder last year, and he has received nearly half a million dollars from the Zionist lobby to date. In the summer of 2014, I used my City Council office not only to attend protests against Israel's indiscriminate bombardment on Gaza at the time, but also to draft a public letter calling for an end to all U.S. military aid for Israel, the illegal settlements in the Palestinian territories, and Israel's occupation of Palestinian lands. During that same time, Smith was enthusiastically backing Israel's Iron Dome system, a key component enabling the Israeli state's slaughter apparatus against the Palestinian people. I used the final days of my decade in City Hall in October and November of 2023 to win the second and the strongest City Council resolution at the time, calling for a ceasefire in Gaza and an end to all military aid to Israel. At that moment, Smith was part of Biden's cabal that was monstrously insisting on over $100 billion in military funding for not just Israel, but also the inter-imperialist proxy war in Ukraine instead of funding the needs of working people struggling with the severe cost-of-living crisis. Adam Smith stands out as one of the most thoroughly pro-corporate politicians out of all the Democrats in the U.S. Congress and Senate. He has shown longstanding and unwavering loyalty to Wall Street. He was part of the aggressively pro-corporate neoliberal offensive of the Democratic Party in the 1990s. The Democratic Party was never a party of the working class, but under Bill Clinton, the party began to more overtly and viciously attack the working class and the labor movement. During the George W. Bush presidency, Smith worked to push the Democratic Party further rightward. His advice to Democrats was to reduce the contrast of Democrats from Bush and the Republicans. He thought the Democratic Party should consider privatizing Medicare. Today, with Medicare for All having widespread support, Smith sometimes claimed to support it. But this is straight out of the Democratic Party's playbook of performatively expressing support for popular progressive demands that they have no intention of allowing to see the light of day. Smith has certainly inspired the confidence of health insurance CEOs, notorious health insurance corporations like Humana, Cigna, and also United Healthcare, who ferociously oppose Medicare for All, have all donated to Smith's campaigns. Also among his donors is the America's Health Insurance Plans PAC, which gave over $100 million to the U.S. Chamber of Commerce to try and derail even meager improvements in healthcare under Obama. Smith voted in favor of the shameful bailouts of big banks in October 2008 while ordinary people were left to rot. He then supported continuing the funding for Wall Street under Obama. Smith's position is that the Democratic Party needs to move further rightward and become more friendly to big business, and that position has only hardened over time. In December last year, appearing with a Seattle-based Trump-supporting podcast host, he railed against what he called "extreme-left policies," quote, of the Democratic Party, claiming that that's what handed the election to Trump. This was at a time when, in fact, Biden and Harris were trying to out-Trump Trump. "He sounds more like a Republican than a lot of Republicans," one right-winger commentator remarked. Smith has even received campaign donations from Elon Musk's SpaceX PAC, not once or twice, but in every election cycle since 2010. It is exactly this lurk to the right by the Democratic Party that has allowed Republicans to increasingly attack workers, immigrants, the anti-war movement, trans people, the poor, and other oppressed people. We aren't going to stop right-wing attacks and defeat Trump by staying silent and allowing Democrats like Adam Smith to remain in power. We need to use every tool available to us: mass protests, strike action, civil disobedience, and independent election campaigns like the one I am announcing here today to defeat war mongers and corporate politicians like Adam Smith. Support for Medicare for All is at historic highs. Quote-unquote "progressive" Democrats have been talking about single-payer healthcare or Medicare for All for decades, but every time there is potential to win it, they pull the plug. This is no accident. It is a cheap and easy talking point for progressive politicians like Pamela Jayapal to raise the flag for Medicare for All when the Republicans are in power, as right now, precisely because they know it won't go anywhere. In reality, this kind of empty lip service is a mechanism to deceive working people and try to keep them inside the Democratic Party. My independent socialist campaign for Congress will not only be committing to fight all out for Medicare for All in Washington, D.C., but I will also simultaneously build momentum for free healthcare through a Seattle ballot initiative. Workers Strike Back has just launched a national campaign called Free Healthcare Now with the model of bypassing both political parties and fighting for free public healthcare paid for by taxing the rich through local ballot initiatives. In Seattle, we are preparing to file a ballot initiative in 2026, which would tax the city's wealthiest corporations approximately $5 billion a year, $5 billion with a B, $5 billion a year to fund free healthcare for everyone in this city. Are you excited? This would expand the Amazon tax that my City Council office won in 2020 alongside working people and the Black Lives Matter movement. This is a fighting strategy to break through the current impasse. If we can win in one or more cities and states, it can act as a battering ram to win Medicare for All nationally. This is similar to the way Canada won its healthcare system by starting in a single province, Saskatchewan, before winning nationally. That fight also went hand in hand with the struggle for a new party of working people called Cooperative Commonwealth Federation. There is huge support for Medicare for All, as there is for most progressive policies, but year after year, it goes nowhere. Because, as everyone knows, the Democrats, like Smith and Republicans, are owned, locked, stocked, and battled by the health insurance industry, Big Pharma, and the billionaire class. And that's why, to win, we need to turn the tables on the parties of the billionaires. We need to build a militant, independent, all-out fight as we prepare the ground for a new party for working people. Working people are fed up with both parties of the billionaires. Under capitalism, it should be no surprise that those who own the vast majority of the planet's wealth also own the politicians. That's why I am a socialist. Because we need a fundamentally different kind of society run by and for working people, not the billionaires. There is no reason, in the wealthiest country in the world, why everyone cannot have free healthcare. There is no reason that college should not be free. There is no reason that high-quality, affordable housing should not be available for all. But working people will not win free healthcare, a seat in the U.S. Congress, or anything else without organizing in the millions. Our experience in Seattle shows that we can defeat the rich and their powerful political servants. I hope you'll join us in this fight. Go to shamasawant.org to volunteer, donate, and get involved. Because when we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
Solidarity.
Thank you, Shama. I'd like to introduce our next speaker, Jonathan Rosenblum. Jonathan is a rank-and-file member of the National Writers Union. He's the author of "Beyond 15: Immigrant Workers, Faith Activists, and the Revival of the Labor Movement." Jonathan helped lead the fight to win the $15 minimum wage in Sea-Tac alongside a movement of airport workers and other working people. He worked as an organizer in Shama Sawant's City Council office and played a crucial role in winning those victories, including Seattle's historic $15 minimum wage victory. Jonathan is also an elected member of the National Coordinating Committee of Workers Strike Back. Jonathan Rosenblum.
Thank you, Em. Thank you, Shama. I am proud to be here today to support Shama Sawant's campaign for U.S. Congress. She's exactly the candidate we need right now. I've lived in Seattle for 36 years. I am a socialist. I am a union organizer and a member of the National Writers Union, speaking today in a personal capacity. I've worked alongside Shama and so many of you for more than a dozen years. I've seen, her movement building, how it has produced historic wins for working people. I also live in Adam Smith's district, and I've seen what he is about: catering to weapons dealers, not working people. He's taken money from cluster bomb companies and missile makers, ignoring the healthcare, housing, and education needs of the residents of our district, including the thousands of refugees from the wars that he has supported. We just heard from Shama that Adam Smith has taken money from Elon Musk's SpaceX company in every election cycle since 2010. Yes, Elon Musk loves Adam Smith. Smith also has taken money from Palantir. That's the company just in the news today because Trump has tapped them for his sick dream of building a Big Brother surveillance state. He's been an unwavering defender of the Israeli state and his genocide on the Palestinian people. He even has gone so far as to call for those of us protesting to be arrested. That is shameful. Adam, if you are listening, this is for you. I am an active Jewish community member. Your threats will not stop me. They will not stop my Jewish friends, nor our Palestinian siblings, nor our allies in the broader movement. Your threats only embolden us to fight on for justice in Palestine. Adam, you are on the wrong side of humanity, and you are on the wrong side of history. You don't represent the people of the 9th District. We need peace with justice, not your unending wars. We need money for free healthcare and great schools, not the war profiteers. We need leaders who will fight for us, not take money and cozy up to Elon Musk. Let me close with a message to my neighbors in the 9th. Defeating Smith and electing Shama is critical, but it will not be easy. He's got corporate money. He's got the pro-genocide money. He's got the political establishment. But as we've shown before, if we build a powerful movement, when we fight, we can win. So I urge you: join the fight today. Come off the sidelines. Let's build our anti-war, anti-genocide, pro-worker, pro-free healthcare movement. Sign up, donate, volunteer. Let's evict Adam Smith. Let's evict the genocider and elect a representative for Rainier Avenue, not Wall Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. We're here because people are fed up with the Democratic politicians like war mongering Democratic Congressman Adam Smith in Washington, along with the rest of the Democrats and Republicans in Congress who have done nothing but attack and sell out working people. We've seen billions of dollars go to fund the genocide in Gaza and wars around the world, while working people can't afford rent and are going into medical debt to pay for basic healthcare. In just the last four years, the wealth of US billionaires has nearly doubled. US billionaires are worth a collective $5.5 trillion, while working people have seen their cost of living skyrocket. We need to fight back. We are building the strongest working-class anti-war, anti-genocide campaign in the country. And our next speaker is Rizwan Samad. He's an activist against the genocide in Gaza, an anti-war activist. He fought alongside Shama and our movement to win the second and strongest resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, including fighting for an end to US military aid to Israel. Rizwan Samad.
Thank you. As my friend just mentioned, my name is Rizwan Samad, and I'm a longtime resident of the state of Washington. As all of you know, that there's a genocide that's been going on for a little over 18 months. We have seen thousands and thousands of sad pictures, screaming of childrens. Babies are dying, people are burning alive, buried alive, with the support of our own Congressman Adam Smith, who loves the war, is a war monger. I'm not hesitant to call him baby killer. You know, his deaf ears cannot hear the cry of thousands of little childrens. He can't see what's happening over there, because he has his unconditional support for evil madman Benjamin Netanyahu. The whole world hates him. We've been begging on the streets of Seattle for over years, screaming, demonstrating, reaching out to him. But, okay, this man can hear, can see. He's the member of Armed Committee, who's been supporting genocide and war mongering all his life. It's about time for a state of Washington and District Nine resident to come out and vote against this war monger. We have better candidates who spend their whole life for humanitarian causes, for civil rights, for injustice. We are better people. This country is brave. We cannot support any more genocide. As a father and a grandfather, I beg you all, go out there and scream loud and get involved and get rid of these war monger politicians. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ragav Kaushik. He's an Indian community activist who helped to win countless victories during the 10 years of Shama's Socialist City Council Office. He played a crucial role in 2023 to win the historic ban on caste-based discrimination in Seattle, the first such protection outside of South Asia. Ragav was also an active leader in the tax Amazon fight. He's a founding member of Workers Strike Back and an elected member of its National Coordinating Committee. Ragav Kaushik.
Can you hear me? I'm truly excited to endorse, excited that Shama is running for Congress. And there are three reasons I'm going to tell you why I'm truly excited. There are three reasons I'm excited to be here and so thrilled that Shama is running for US Congress. I'm going to go through them, okay? The first one is Shama has had an incredible track record of achievements that I'm sure all of you are familiar with, but is worth going over again. The minimum wage increase in the city of Seattle, tax Amazon, significant improvements in renters' rights, making Seattle the first jurisdiction outside South Asia to ban caste discrimination, and so on. I want to call out the "so on." This is not a complete list. The list goes on and on. I don't know of any figures on the left who have come even close to this in terms of concrete victories. All of this was achieved through a political approach that has a lot to teach us, that I'm so excited is going to a national level now. It is a political approach that does not compromise on values. It is a political approach that is rooted in social movements, of which we are all a part of. It is a political approach that does not engage in backroom deals with politicians. What I just said here might be simple to state, but it's actually a profound lesson. And as a person who's been, who's had the privilege of being a part of these movements, I've seen myself from close quarters how rarely these principles are practiced. And I know that the Democrats certainly do not stand for any of that. This is an approach, the approach that Shama stands for is not an approach that is distinct from what all the Democrats stand for, including the progressive Democrats. It is an approach that distinguishes itself from the NGO world. It is high time this approach is applied at the national level. And it is the kind of approach that is needed to win significant victories at the national level, to fight Trump, to fight the right-wing hooligans and the democratic establishment, the bipartisan establishment for the rich that has got a hold of Congress right now. The second reason I'm really excited about this campaign is because she's running against Adam Smith, who is a war criminal enabler, a genocide enabler. He's one of the most enthusiastic supporters of Israel's genocide, which is plumbing new depths of horror every single day. I'm going to quote Mohammed Khalil, his open letter, which was published a while ago. But it's very appropriate to this moment. Quote, "My unjust detention is indicative of the anti-Palestinian racism that both the Biden and Trump administrations have demonstrated over the past 16 months, as the US has continued to supply Israel with weapons to kill Palestinians and prevented international intervention. For decades, anti-Palestinian racism has driven efforts to expand US laws and practices that are used to violently repress Palestinians, Arab-Americans, and other communities. That is precisely why I am being targeted." End quote. The racism and repression that Khalil is referring to is embraced wholesale by Adam Smith, who not only ardently supports Israel, but also the repression of anti-genocide activists in this country, who he refers to as left-wing fascists. On the contrary, Shama's track record, even on this particular matter, is truly stellar and an exemplar of the approach she stands for. Just to give one example, she led one of the first Gaza ceasefire resolutions passed in this country back in November. Yeah, please plug. Back in the November of 2023, soon after the genocide started. It was one of the earliest, and to this day remains one of the strongest ceasefire resolutions out there. The third reason I'm truly excited today is that we're also launching the Free Healthcare Campaign in the city of Seattle. The assassination of the United Healthcare CEO indicates, is an indication that there is a lot of anger in this country over the state of healthcare. So like with minimum wage and renters' rights, we want to begin with the city of Seattle to realize free healthcare nationally. In the city of Seattle, our idea is to achieve the victory that working people so badly need through a ballot initiative. This is the kind of electrifying campaign that will energize working people here and will feed into the congressional campaign. And this is exactly the kind of electrifying campaign that we need, the kind of electrifying politics that we need to take to Congress. It's exactly the kind of offensive approach that is needed to defeat the ominous forces Trump represents and the bipartisan establishment that represents the rich and the oligarchy. It is the kind of approach that the Democrats will never offer, but true socialists like Shama Sawant will. Solidarity.
Thank you, Ragav. Adam Smith is funded by a long list of corporations and billionaires. In 2024, his biggest donor was the pro-genocide AIPAC. But Adam Smith isn't only a vicious war monger, he's also a thoroughly bought and paid-for representative of big business in the weapons industry. He's funded by notorious surveillance firm Palantir and its billionaire CEO Alexander Karp, who's already a maxed-out donor to Smith's campaign. He's funded by Microsoft President Bradford Smith, who owns a $12.6 million home on Lake Washington. He's funded by a long list of corporations like Lockheed Martin and for-profit health insurance companies, as Shama mentioned. In contrast, all of Shama's campaigns, all of our movements, have been funded by thousands of working-class people, socialists, union members, regular people fighting back. I want to introduce our next speaker, Joan Wright. She's a rank-and-file member of OPEIU Local 153, speaking in a personal capacity. She's been an active part of many of the victories of Shama's council office, including the Amazon tax and historic renters' rights victories. She's also a member of Workers Strike Back. Joan Wright.
Thank you, everyone. As I said, my name is Joan Wright. I'm a rank-and-file member of OPEIU and a member of Workers Strike Back and Revolutionary Workers. And I am proud to stand here today and support Shama Sawan, who has an unparalleled record of delivering historic victories that have changed working people's lives. I will be bringing a resolution to my union to support Shama's campaign, and I urge other union numbers in the Seattle region and in Washington to do the same. And I appeal to all working people to get involved. Like all of Shama's election campaigns, this campaign is not a careerist project, but a vehicle that Shama and Workers Strike Back are going to use to fight for working people. Shama led the fight for the first $15 minimum wage in a major US city. And there was a demand that was called utopian and ludicrous by Democrats and corporate media until we won it. And that victory spread across the country, raising wages for millions of workers. And our campaign right now will fight for an end to the genocide in Gaza, free public healthcare for all by taxing the rich and rent control. When the genocide in Gaza began, we organized with Shama's Socialist City Council Office and won the second-in-the-nation resolution for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. And that included demands for an end to all US military funding for Israel and an end to the Israeli state's occupation of Palestinian territories. These demands constituted the strongest ceasefire resolution introduced anywhere in the United States. And my fellow union members and I used it as a model when we wrote and passed our ceasefire resolution that we organized for and won in our union, OPEIU. These victories clearly demonstrate what can be won by organizing working people in support of bold demands, independent of the Democratic Party, the same party that has sent more money and arms to Israel than any Israeli military than any other worldwide. In early May, the Israeli state all but openly declared ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people from the region as their goal. It's disgusting, but this is not new. Reports from many organizations last year, from the Human Rights Watch to the United Nations, concluded that Gaza was being subjected to ethnic cleansing. And that was under Democratic President Biden. And with the chest-thumping support of Biden's fellow war mongering Democrats like Adam Smith. With Trump in office and the Republicans having a congressional majority, the Democratic Party has completely failed to fight them, whether it's on the genocide or tax cuts for the rich or the attacks on immigrants. This is why we cannot rely on Democrats who serve corporate interests. Adam Smith has the blood of hundreds of thousands of Palestinian people who have been slaughtered in Gaza and the West Bank and in Lebanon. This is why working people and the anti-war movement need our own political organizations like Workers Strike Back, independent of the two parties of imperialism and capitalism. Likewise, the approach of relying on progressive, so-called progressive Democrats to deliver public healthcare has failed spectacularly. Despite years of Medicare-for-all bills introduced by self-described progressives like Bernie Sanders and AOC and Pramila Jayapal, we are no closer to universal healthcare than we were a decade ago. And this is not an accident. It is the inevitable result of a strategy that depends on politicians whose party is funded by the very insurance companies and pharmaceutical corporations that profit from our broken system. Shama, Workers Strike Back, and working people will use this congressional campaign to build the fight for free public healthcare for all. And that includes free healthcare for undocumented immigrants being attacked by the Trump administration and gender-affirming care. Across the country and including here in Seattle, we're seeing hospitals end their gender-affirming care because of threats from the Trump administration. And these attacks will only escalate without a real fight back. Just last week, we witnessed something in this city that should outrage every single working person. Seattle police brutally attacked protesters who stood up against a far-right, anti-queer group. Mayor Bruce Harrell and the city council members, all of them Democrats, are responsible for this. Instead of condemning the far-right attacks on trans and queer people, the mayor and the Democratic Party establishment blamed the protesters. The Democratic Party is a dead end and a graveyard for working class and oppressed people. That is why Shama is the fighter we need. We need someone who will fight for public healthcare, not just talk about it. Someone who will stand with workers on picket lines, not take corporate donations. Someone who will fight to end the genocide in Gaza, not take donations from AIPAC and the military-industrial complex. Shama is that fighter. And when working people get organized with our campaign and we fight, we can win. When we fight, when we fight, when we fight, solidarity.
Our final speaker is Shirley Henderson. Shirley is a member of Workers Strike Back. She's the owner of Squirrel Shop's coffee shop in the Central District, also in the Ninth Congressional District. Shirley, as a small business owner, played an active and crucial part in winning the victories of Shama's council office, including the Amazon tax and the historic $15 now victory in 2014. Shirley Henderson.
Thank you so much. Are we inspired today? Are we ready to fight? My name is Shirley Henderson. I am a socialist. I'm a member of Workers Strike Back and a small business owner. And like Jonathan, I'm a resident of Washington State's Ninth Congressional District. And I am so proud to be here to fully support Shama Sawan's run for Congress, because working people in this country are in desperate need of a fighter that actually represents us in US Congress. We need an end to the horrific genocide in Gaza. We need free healthcare for all by taxing the rich. And working people and struggling small businesses across this country need rent control. While we have seen seemingly endless barrage of attacks from the Trump administration on the federal level, as so many have said today, we are seeing a complete lack of fight back from the Democrats, who are in fact carrying out similar attacks themselves at the state and local levels across the country, cutting state and city budgets of essential services while refusing to tax the rich to fund what working people need. We've just seen Democratic Governor Bob Ferguson and with a Democratic-dominated state legislature, carrying out billions of dollars in cuts to social services and attacks on public sector workers. And in the case of Seattle, the all-Democrat Seattle City Council has been attempting to roll back the victories of Shama's office. Washington Ninth Congressional District Democrat and Warhawk Adam Smith, who has long been a darling of the weapons manufacturers and Wall Street loyalists, is no exception, as so many have already spoken to. In fact, in 2021, he endorsed Sarah Nelson, who has overseen the offensive against working people in this city. Both parties are in the pockets of the big insurance, big pharma, and weapons manufacturers. It's high time that we break from these two war mongering parties of the billionaires, because it's clear that neither of them is coming to save us. It's time that we take up the fight ourselves. Shama is a fighter who has proven track record of not just fighting for working people, but winning. Will not just go on the defense against these attacks on our Medicare, on fighting, but will go on the offense to fight for things that working people actually need. I marched with Shama for marriage equality in 2010. I fought alongside her in the Occupy movement of 2011. And I've stood with Shama through her impressive decade in council office, where unlike other so-called progressive city council members, she used her office to build movements and won a long list of historic gains for working people in this city, despite big business and the Democrats attempting to crush our victories at every turn. Unlike the so-called progressives on city council who often say nice-sounding words, but then turn around and betray working people in the interest of big business, Shama has stuck to her promises that she made in running for office, fighting for $15 an hour for the Amazon tax, which raises hundreds of millions from the city's wealthiest businesses to fund affordable housing every year, and the long list of impressive renters' rights that she's won. What was Adam Smith doing this whole time? He was giving tens of billions of dollars for the war industry billionaires. He was bailing out the very big banks that wrecked working people's lives in the Great Recession. He was demonizing working and young people who dared to demand something better. And sadly, so-called progressive Democrats do the job of providing cover to people like Adam Smith. That's why the Democratic Party is a dead end. Shama's record is sadly unique. No one has used their elected position as a movement-building tool. And in the past decade, where working people across this country have experienced defeat after defeat, Shama's office stands out as the only one that has been consistently winning. And her fighting strategy is urgently needed nationally, including in US Congress. Progressive Democrats, as Shama said, like AOC and Bernie, have long since capitulated to the corporate and war mongering agenda of their party. We need representatives who actually represent us. Sorry. Thank you. That we need people who use their positions to help build mass movements in order to end the genocide and all US military funding to the state of Israel, to defeat the tax on public funds for our basic needs, and win offensive demands like Medicare-for-all and a $25-an-hour minimum wage. I am willing to fight like hell and burn the midnight oil to ensure that we get a fighter like Shama in Congress. I urge all of you who are listening, who are disgusted at representatives like Adam Smith, who are not our representatives, but Representative Wall Street and the big weapons manufacturers, to join us, to volunteer, to donate to the website and get involved because this is going to take a massive fight from all of us to defeat this corporate war monger, Adam Smith, and put into office a fighter like Shama Sawant. Who's with me? When we fight. When we fight. When we fight.
Great. We'll have a little bit of time for media questions. I just want to repeat the website. And everyone who's watching on the livestream, everybody here, go to shamasawant.org. That's K-S-H-A-M-A-S-A-W-A-N-T dot org, shamasawant.org. Go there, donate, sign up to get involved, become a part of this campaign. It is going to take a huge fight to win, to defeat the weapons manufacturers, to defeat AIPAC, to defeat big business, to defeat Adam Smith, and elect a fighter to US Congress, to elect the socialist money can't buy. And with that, we can open it up to questions from the media for Shama or for any of our other speakers. Does anyone have questions?
Well, it's an interesting question that you're asking. My first response is, you know what? The Democratic Party is so, and the Republican Party for that matter, is so chock-full of rotten politicians. If you want to run against them, you're spoiled for choice. Okay? But I happen to live in Adam Smith's district, so I'm running against one of the war-mongering hawks in the US Congress. Well, my primary message, even though the media is not interested in this often, my primary message is to the vast majority of working people who do agree with the things we fought for. And not only do they agree in principle or ideologically, to this day, when I am in grocery stores or when I'm shopping at Goodwill or I'm walking on the streets, working people come up to me and say, "That renters' rights you fought for or the $15-an-hour minimum wage that we all collectively fought for, that saved my family's life." To this day, when Workers Strike Back members are at tables outside grocery stores and farmers' markets, people come up to them and say, "The victories that we won through the decade of my decade on the Seattle City Council, those victories have been a lifeline for them." And that is precisely why the majority of the population of this city was dead-set against the city council trying to undermine last year our $15 victory or this year to water down ethics laws in service of corporate landlords in preparation to dismantle the renters' rights we win. And in any city, under capitalism, any city, any state, any country, under capitalism, you are going to see people who disagree with our agenda. And many of those people are those who are the beneficiaries of capitalism. And that is why in this election, as I have said in every election before, I don't represent all constituents in some sort of blanket manner. I represent the working class of the 9th Congressional District. And yes, there are going to be billionaires and multimillionaires in this district who are going to be angry. There are going to be Zionist lobby members in this district who are going to be angry with us. I don't represent them. Unfortunately, for working people. Well, first of all, to be clear, nobody who says, gets a guarantee of winning, is speaking the truth. I never lie to the working class. As M. and others have said, this is going to be an uphill fight. And that is why I'm urging everybody who's watching this. If you agree about ending the genocide, if you're angry at war-mongering corporate politicians like Adam Smith, then you need to join us. And what is needed, and this is an answer to your question, Marcus, what is needed to defeat politicians like Adam Smith is exactly the kind of strategy that we showed over and over again in Seattle. And that is the only reason why we were able to defeat all kinds of powerful entities that were lined up against us. I ran in four elections. One of them was a recall attempt against me. But we won all of those four elections. Why? Not because it was easy, but because working people got organized alongside me and my fellow socialists, and we fought back. Unfortunately, many other progressives or self-described progressives have refused to use that or failed, for whatever reason, even if they are well-intentioned, have failed to use that fighting strategy, have failed to distinguish themselves in the eyes of working people from their corporate opponents. And they have also failed to run as independents. They have always run as Democratic Party members. You cannot fight a genocide from inside the party of genocide. It's as simple as that. And it is not only about the elections that have been lost by progressives who ran as Democrats and didn't really put up a fight. It's also about those who got elected. Look at Jamal Bowman. Jamal Bowman's story is a cautionary tale for what doesn't work if you actually want to fight against the genocide and if you want to represent working people. If you are mealy-mouthed and you try to step on both sides, the Zionist lobby and the Wall Street interests will absolutely crush you. They went after everything they had against Jamal Bowman. It was not the Republicans. It was in the Democratic primary that the Zionist lobby poured untold amounts of money to defeat Jamal Bowman. That is a sober reminder for us that if we want any hope of defeating war-mongering corporate politicians like Adam Smith, then we have to fight like hell. I'll also say, the way we delivered a stinging defeat to Adam Smith endorsed Sarah Nelson and the city council that was carrying water and is still carrying water for corporate landlords, that is a concrete example of how you run a fighting campaign that has the chance of winning against someone like Adam Smith. And what I mean by that is being clear, for working people, being clear that when you go to public comment, you don't go and beg the city council members to do the correct thing or the moral thing. You go there as a movement, as Workers Strike Back did, and you politically, publicly shame the council members who are selling out working people. That is what we are doing today. Adam Smith is a war monger. He has blood on his hands, and he needs to be thrown out. I don't, this is not a question I am preoccupied by. And I'll explain what happened in City Hall as well. But before that, the way we win victories for working people, let alone ending the genocide and ending US military funding for the Israeli state, is not by going and caucusing by the parties of genocide and war mongering. You do that by using your office, elected office, as a platform to galvanize and mobilize working people in the city of Seattle. We have done that. We mobilized working people in the tens of thousands. If we have a seat in Congress for our working-class politics, then we will mobilize millions of people. It will be the pressure of millions of people that will make the US Congress and also whoever the president is at the time, it will put pressure on them. That is how we have won every single victory in City Hall. After I took office in January of 2014, a couple of weeks from then, two of the most leading Democrats in City Hall came to my office, sat me down and told me, "It is all well and good that you roused the rabble and you got into City Hall, but we are here to tell you that City Hall runs on our terms and you are not going to win any minimum wage increase, let alone 15." Less than six months later, we had won 15. And those two, along with every other politician there, including Bruce Harrell, were forced to vote yes on $15 an hour. But that was not because I caucused with the Democrats. That's because I built the 15 Now! movement and used my office as a vehicle to build that movement. I think this question has, you know, is this question that was just asked. At this moment, it is only being kept on life support in very far-right media. The truth is that the anger against the genocide internationally has been so severe that even heads of state, like the leaders in Germany and Canada and in country after country, even though they have not stopped funding Israel, they're still doing it. But there is so much pressure on them that purely out of personal political career preservation or future-proofing, as a journalist from The Intercept correctly said, purely out of personal interest, career interest, they're being forced to say, "Israel is going too far. This needs to stop, and this is the genocide." But the far-right commentators like this one, they will continue parroting this line. It is completely out of touch with ordinary people. Anti-Semitism is a real scourge, as is Islamophobia. We have to fight against both. There is no room for any kind of hate and bigotry in a decent society. And those who are fighting against the genocide are also fighting against anti-Semitism. And what we need to do is continue to unite people across ethnicity to fight the genocide. Because guess what? The vast majority of American working people want this genocide to end.
I think we have time for one more question.
This is again right-wing agenda. Can I have questions from others or we'll end the press conference?
All right. If there's no questions from anybody else, we're gonna wrap up.
One last one from Whitey.
In the second day of prior month, I was incredibly distraught over the events of the past week, where this hate group, May Day USA, was allowed, permitted in the gay perth of a blue city, of a blue state, and counter protesters were arrested, beaten, sprayed with irritants. And then again, at City Hall on Tuesday, at an unpermitted event. And in both cases, they were defended by the police. And the police cracked down and abused counter protesters, including one of our other media members that were here. Could you speak to that at all?
Yes.
And what your campaign and what Workers Strike Back stands for?
Yes. Thank you so much for asking. You and I and many of us were there at that counter protest, standing up for trans rights and queer rights. And we ought to be extremely proud that we did that. And that scene has forever etched in my brain, to see the extreme right-wing action that are very, very, you know, just really with a dystopian message of anti-queer, anti-trans kind of message happening on the plaza of Seattle City Hall, a blue city in a blue state, as you said, with all Democrats in City Hall, from the mayor to the city council, and all these cops from the Seattle Police Department protecting them. All of that scene should be a reminder. Let's never forget that. Because it should be a grim reminder for us about two things. One is that the Democrats are not on the side of the queer community. Queer rights have never been won because the Democratic Party woke up and said, "Oh, yes, we need to have marriage equality. Oh, yes, we need to make sure that trans rights are protected." When the trans pride, the first trans pride of Seattle was happening, that was in 2013, when I was running for my first campaign for city council. And our campaign that year was the only campaign, the one socialist campaign that was there, was the only campaign that stood with trans pride. And at that time, many of the Democrats who were running for office openly laughed at the organizer of trans pride, literally saying things like, "Trans pride? That's not a thing." And that's the track record of the Democratic Party on queer rights. We saw the Defense of Marriage Act and Don't Ask, Don't Tell, both happening under Bill Clinton, another Democrat. Anything that working people have won, whether it was workplace rights, queer rights, women's rights, or black rights, or immigrants' rights, it has happened because we got independently organized, and we need to do more of that. One more snippet of this story is, the reason the horrific attacks by the police happened at Cal Anderson Park was because the All-Democrat City Council weakened the laws that my office passed during the George Floyd Rebellion. We passed a historic, unheard-of law that banned the use of so-called crowd-control weapons, you know, weapons against peaceful protests. That was a historic victory for the BLM movement. This All-Democrat City Council ended up repealing that law. And that is why the police had the legal right for carrying out that violence. And that is why, lesson number two, is that police departments, whether they are in a blue city or a red city, it doesn't matter. They serve the interests of the capitalist class, the bosses, and their political representatives. Whether the cop is white or black or queer themselves does not matter. When they don that uniform, they are serving capitalism.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I just want to remind anyone watching the livestream, go to shamasawant.org, shamasawant.org. Donate, get involved, become part of this movement. Thank you to the media for coming out. Thank you to all working people for coming, watching on the livestream. When we fight. When we fight. Solidarity.